Okay, let's go ahead and start the Planning Commission meeting for May 28th. I'll go ahead and start with a roll call.
Chair Lane.
Here.
Vice Chair Palito.
Here.
Commissioner Levinson.
Here.
Commissioner Tinelli.
Here.
Commissioner Lugers.
Yeah.
All present and accounted for.
All right, very good. And then the election of the chair and vice chair is up next, so go ahead and take nominations for that.
I nominate Eric Lane.
This is the last time. For two, for a couple of reasons. First of all, it's the end of a 14-year term. And, and, and so, but I will not be making any more terms. So this is, this is my swan song.
I'll second that.
All right, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll say aye for the record, but I don't really believe it. All right. All right, and then Bob, are you up for, you're, you're, you're on, you're, you're up for promotions on this committee, right? You're up, up right now in front of...
Be appointed, but I don't know.
You sure?
Why?
I'm nominating Bob.
Yeah, I'm nominating Bob, and then if you, if you don't get appointed, then, then we'll sit there and appoint a new vice chair. How about that?
City Council.
Yeah.
Fire me then.
Well, if they do, then we'll replace you. All right, I'll, I'll second it. Did that get seconded yet? I'll second it.
Think you're the second.
All right, I'll move and second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, good. And then, and then I'll, I'll, I'll give you some training wheels during the year. Okay, very good. All right, so the next item is the public comment section. What we do with the public comment section is we open the floor for anything that's not on the agenda. So there's one other, so this would be, or sometimes people bring up things that we ought to look into, or feedback on something that's been done, or just to, just to come up and say what a great job we're doing. All those things are, can apply. So the, the next thing, the next thing that I will also comment on is that if you're here to talk about the, the 98 Maple project, we will want you to speak now because we're, that, the applicant has asked for a continuance. So if that's the case, I can go ahead and open up the, the public comment section now for you. And if someone comes in later on for that, I'll, I'll do that again. So normally, we don't let people talk on an item that's not on the agenda, which officially this won't be, because we're going to do a continuance on it. We'll do that upfront, Brittany. I'll, I'll do that upfront. And then if, and then if someone comes and says, hey, I was here for 98 Maple, I came all the way out here, then we'll get, we'll go ahead and go back to this item and say we'll open it up for items on agenda. All right, with that, I'll go ahead and open the public comment section. People are roaring up to the microphone. And no one online to speak? Okay, good. Then I'll go ahead and close the public comment section. And the next item, what we're going to do is we'll go ahead and approve the minutes, and then I'll go ahead and do the continuance, all right? This is a... Okay, this is a, this is for the minutes of the meltdown session of December 11th.
Yes, I was reading through that. I didn't think the minutes quite captured the passion you brought to the meeting that night.
Yeah, I, 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 I was looking for the line that says, Mr. Lane melted down on the applicant, but it's not in there. But it, it's accurate, but that's, but not, not, not really...
Doesn't capture the ethos.
Didn't capture the Christmas spirit of that moment. All right, so any changes on that? I didn't see anything.
No.
Got one abstention, right? All right, so I'll go ahead and do a roll call just because of the attention, all right? Roll call, please, on this one? Do you have a motion to accept?
Yes, I, I move that we accept the minutes from our December 11th meeting.
And I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Tinelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Levinson.
Aye.
Chair Lane.
Yes.
Commissioner Lugers.
Stained.
Vice Chair Palito.
Aye.
And he abstains because he wasn't on the commission then. Wasn't because he didn't read it. All right, then the next items are the public comment, the public hearings items, and they'll, they'll be handled the same way. So I'll just go over the procedure that, that we do on these. First of all, on every item, we'll go ahead and get an overview from staff, and then the commission will ask questions from the staff if there are any. And then I'll go ahead and open up the public comment section, starting with the applicant or their representative. Then anyone else who wants to speak on the item can, can speak. And then, and there could be questions from commission at that time. Then we'll close the public comment section and bring it back to, to the commission for discussion and action as appropriate. We'll do that on everyone, and if somebody comes in later, I'll let them know about the procedures so that nobody is sort of figuring that they missed out. With that, then I'll also say that we know that item 4E, the Heritage Tree Removal Request at 98 Maple Avenue, the applicant has requested a continuance to next month. Is that correct? So they want to spend some more time with their neighbors. And we did get two, two letters from neighbors opposed to it, so that may have, that may have caused some reconsideration of how to handle the process. And those will be on the record, right? Those will be included in our, in our minutes?
Yes.
Okay, good. So there, there, let me pull up the, the name of the individual so that they know that we actually did get it. I have it right here in front of me.
It's Town Planner Brittany Bendix. I, I did respond to both of those emails concerning, concerning, ah, confirming receipt as well as acknowledging that the project would be continued to next month's hearing. In terms of the efforts with the continuance, one of the values, I think, in getting public comment and some of the feedbacks that you've provided at the commission during similar cases such as December's hearing, is that it gives staff greater leverage to get the applicant to provide information that may have been missing or not provided during the analysis. So for example, on 98 Maple, our town arborist had requested additional testing in the cavity of the tree. And so ideally, this month's continuance gives the applicant time to now do that testing and provide additional documentation relative to the health.
All right, and the, the two individuals, the, the, one letter came from Paul Quinlan, who lives at 49 Maple, opposing it and gave some points in terms of why the, why the opposition, both in terms of the, the tree ordinance and also in terms of the plan itself. And then the other individual, Darren and Amy Torrey, who are at 57 Maple, 57 Maple, are opposed to it for very similar reasons. So I'll just go on record saying that we did, as a commission, receive those, and they'll be part of the consideration next month. We will include them in next month's packet, too. All right, that's good. All right, so I, I need to, I'll go ahead and make, move to continue the Heritage Tree Removal Item of, on 98 Maple Avenue to our June meeting. Need a second?
I'll second.
Seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, so if anybody shows up on that, we'll, we'll get them up to speed on terms, in terms of how to best handle it. Next item, we'll go back to item 4A with the General Plan Consistency Determination of the Capital Improvement Program for fiscal years 24, 25 through 28, 29. And Brittany, you're going to go over that for us? Is that correct?
Actually, it'll be our senior planner, Tom Ford.
Okay, Tom, go ahead.
Hi.
Now, your rates go up when you make a presentation.
That's good. Good evening, Chair Lane and Planning Commissioners. So I am going to present just a quick, brief overview of the General Plan Consistency with the Capital Improvement Program. Or that one. So staff recommends that the Planning Commission find that the Capital Improvement Program for fiscal years 2025, 2026 through 2029, 2030 is consistent with the Atherton General Plan. And like I said, I'll be very brief, but I can give you a quick overview as to why we have come to that conclusion. So the capital improvement programs for, just for everybody's benefit, it helps the, especially the first year, helps the city council in their budget thinking and, and the budget that they will approve next June, or next month, in June. So the projects that are identified come from council priorities, master plans that have been conducted at the town, such as the bicycle master plan and such. And then, like I said, those will get incorporated into the town's budget after further discussion. First, it is study session in early June that the council will have. And then they will consider it for adoption as part of the whole budget at their June hearing. So the capital improvement program, in terms of identifying actual programs and funds that would be allocated to them, really concentrates on that first year. And the other four-year cycles are called out years. They're kind of considered in the capital improvement program, which is an attachment to, to the item tonight. But the, the money and the dollar allocations are for the first year. So quick, again, a quick overview. There was three main programs, which we outlined in our staff report, and they're also dealt with in greater detail in the actual draft capital improvement program. Streets and transportation, drainage, and then the third being towns, buildings, park, and facilities. For those of you that were observing this last year, you'll notice that a lot of these are very similar, because some of these are programs that you just do every year, like pavement, traffic signals, keeping them maintained where things need to be improved, changed. The pieces of the general plan that support these programs include four specific elements. The land use element, circulation, community safety, and the open space and conservation element. So just very briefly, the first program, Streets and Transportation, the draft CIP, Capital Improvement Program, identifies five specific projects. And each of these five projects are supported by multiple goals, objectives, and policies that are in the circulation element. Again, because they're generally dealing with roads and people getting around, the circulation element generally touches on those in one way or another. The second category that's outlined in the plan is drainage. There's two specific projects, the Drainage Improvement Program. This is something that generally comes up every year. And it's just something that gets paid attention to in the budget and the CIP. And then the other project being the Upper Atherton Channel Monitoring. The general plan goals and policies that support those two programs include community safety element, and then again, the open space and conservation element. So there's a goal and a policy from the open space and conservation element that really touches on these two programs. That element is actually more evident in this third category, the town buildings, parks, and facilities. The project includes accessibility improvements throughout the town, specifically at town-owned properties, like the Civic Center and such. The Civic Center Master Plan Implementation Program, so that's projects that were identified in the Civic Center Master Plan, and they're being implemented. And then, of course, the Park Master Plan Improvement Program for other projects at the park. The general plan guidance includes a land use element goal, and then an open space and conservation element goal, and specific policies. So for that reason, we have our recommended motion here on the screen and in your packets. And I'm happy to take any questions.
And just, would you just make sure that everybody's clear on what the Planning Commission's role in this? It's not to approve the budget, it's not to approve what, what our choices are. It's just to make sure that it's consistent with the overall planning SEQA capability.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
Right. It's a very, it's a very specific slice of the role, because the, the, the driver in terms of what goes on the list and what's spent is, is all the town council's responsibility. If they were to propose something that we knew, like put a freeway through the middle of, the middle of the town, we'd go like, wait a minute, that, you know, that might have some SEQA impact, but that's about the, that's about the extent of our role in this. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
Okay.
So is it just the council that has input into this, or like Jerry, Transportation, have any input on any of this?
Theoretically, we could. If we said there's something that we really think is important to get done, because we've seen with a higher density in this area, we definitely need this to be put on the list of things to done, done in terms of street improvement or drainage improvement, we would have, we would be able to drive that forward. Same, all the commissions would. But in terms of actually being able to put it on the list and actually making sure it's on the list, that's up to the...
But there's no quote-unquote "formal" way that committees are approached to say this is coming up? Is there anything that you might want to add on to the list and bring up to council?
Not on the, not on the 13 years that I've been on.
I'm just, I'm new at it, so I just didn't know whether or not they solidified.
If something comes up repeatedly, we do see it, it's gone up here, in terms of, if there's an issue that we've had in the, around a, around a school side or something like that, and it came up repeatedly, this is years ago, in the schools, that seemed like it, it put it on the radar screen to be considered. But, but I've never had any, anything that came forward and says, do you want anything in the capital?
Okay.
Recommendation, maybe. All the budget planning sessions, there's four of them, I believe, are usually joint sessions between the Finance Committee and the City Council. They do the meeting that they just did, two weeks ago, I guess it was. Three weeks ago, first week. On all these CIP projects, capital projects. Personally, I think the Planning Commission be, should be invited as a joint participant in that.
I, I would agree. I mean, I think that that would make sense.
Yeah.
And maybe, Brittany, you can take that up with the boss or something. I don't know whether that's Queen Elizabeth or George, but...
Charles, no. I can certainly pass that along with the finding determination.
Tell them we'll, we'll bring donuts, and maybe they'll set him up.
Well, maybe they want to see how the inclusionary housing study session goes first.
That's our test.
That's, that's our screening. Okay, that's good. All right, any, any questions of staff? All right, I'll go ahead and open up public, public comment on this item. Anybody here to speak on the capital improvement program? Another mad rush to the microphone. Anything online? Okay, then I'll go ahead and close the public comment section, looking for a, a motion.
I'll make that.
All right.
I move that the Planning Commission find that the Capital Improvement Program for fiscal years 2025, 2026, 2029, 2030, projects include that program, not a project under SEQA, and is with the Atherton General Plan staff report.
The motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All right. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, and no, noes and no abstentions, so we're moving ahead. The next item on the agenda is 4B, which is the accessory structure and fencing variances on 2 Dinkelspiel Station Lane, which I guess the applicant is the city, or the town, right?
The applicant is the library.
Oh, library.
The town is the property owner.
Okay.
So there, there was some initial oversight by the city council in terms of granting the permission for the library to pursue this effort.
Okay, got it. I, I knew that they were involved somehow, but I didn't realize that. Okay, without...
Michael, can you bring up the slides?
All right, we'll go ahead and start with the staff overview, and then we'll open up the public comment afterwards.
Sure.
The mayor here to do the presentation?
Just one second.
All right.
Uh, no, it's part of the larger... These are the applicant's slides that you just saw a sneak peek of, in case you want, in case you have additional questions.
Okay.
Given the number of items, we are trying to be somewhat streamlined.
Okay, fine.
Okay, so this is the item before you. It's the children's garden variance request that would supplement the activities there at 2 Dinkelspiel Station Lane. Dinkelspiel Station Lane is essentially the driveway out here in front of Town Hall that accesses both Town Center and the library. Staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission approve the requests for both accessory structure and fencing variances from the Atherton Municipal Code, Section 17.40040, which deals with development standards for accessory buildings and structures. And then 17.46030, which is the development standards for fences. Just a general overview, the area where the scope of work is, where the, the children's garden would be located, is just next to the library, and adjacent to the shared property line the Town Center has with adjacent neighbors. Next slide. The proposed garden features ADA accessibility pretty much throughout the entire area, a willow hut, natural branch tunnel, colored and mirrored posts, a boulder-climbing mound, sculptural tree stump, which is the stump from the tree that was just removed in front of this room previously, landscaping features, and then good neighbor fencing.
Can you point out those items on the, on the map? Because when I was the go-go there, trying to figure it out, I said, well, that could be it, that could be it, I'm not sure.
Sure. Starting from the very left of the screen, the circular element there is the willow hut. Then there are, there's a path flanked by logs. The cluster of gray, dark gray circles is the boulder-climbing mound. Then moving to the right of that, you'll see the ADA ramp that connects to the existing deck. And then interior, below the ADA ramp is the collection of colored and mirrored posts. Oh, sorry. That's just a pathway that connects to the natural branch tunnel, which is supplemented with mirrored posts that are the element that's closest to the side property line there. And then there's a slightly elevated area that connects to more seating. And a, the pathway at the right then is a series of stumps that double as seating elements as well as small climbing features.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I couldn't find any of that on the map for what it was worth, specifically. Did I miss it in some other aspect of the package or not? I mean, I, I saw the, saw the spots and I guessed, but I didn't see anything with a label on it. Was there a label on any of that?
It was probably not labeled beyond more just the iconography that's provided in the details of the sheets.
That's fine. That's, but then I read it properly. All right, thank you. Okay. Thank you for the walkthrough on that.
Sure. So here, I've drawn the main building setback that is required from the development standards. It needs to be eight feet from the main building, which is the existing library, and then the former Town Hall area that's used for the Heritage Room. That's the green line. And then the red line shows the side yard setback, which is 10 feet, that's required. And so we have a lot of variety of landscaping structures effectively that fall within these two areas and are as close to the main building as 1 foot 8 inches, or the side property line of 1 foot 7 inches.
Do you know how high the climbing elements are?
We do have that in the plans. It's under 6 feet, I would say. It's venture to say it's even under 3 feet, but I can look that specifically up for you.
Well, maybe I'll ask whoever here to talk on it, because I'm concerned about the visibility to neighbors and things like that. That's, okay, cool.
Next slide. This next slide deals with the good neighbor fencing that's being installed in part because of visibility as well as any sort of noise concerns. This is something that the applicant worked on with the neighbors. The standard that this needs an exception from is a requirement that fencing on property lines be uniformly designed across the entire property line. The lattice and the height combination here is a deviation from other fencing that you'll see along the property line for the extent of Town Center. And so that's why technically it requires an exception.
Okay, now there's a, there's a fence there right now that looks like this. Is that, this is going to be a replacement for that? Or is that an extension of it, or what?
It's a replacement.
Okay, got it. All right.
It's an extension.
Okay, like, like she, like you said.
Clarified by the applicant.
All right, good. All right, super.
That's going to be 8 feet tall?
Yes.
The section that's there right now is 8 feet tall. So, yeah, okay, good. We'll, we'll get the updates on that. But when I walked it...
Going to go all the way to Ashfield? Ashfield, bit to Maple, I guess it is, wherever the next street is.
It's, it's not the full extent of that area. So we can have the applicant come and show you where exactly on the plans the stretch of new fencing will be proposed.
Yeah, all right, let's do, let's wait until the... Yeah, I couldn't tell on the map either. And I, when I did the walkthrough, I could see where it, it might be raised, because there was a whole section that's lower. So I assumed that that's what we were talking about, but let's, we'll find out more in a minute. All right, keep going.
Next slide. So this slide addresses the required findings for variance applications. There's four. All four must be met in order to grant the variance. The first one relates to special circumstances that are applicable to the property. The second relates to any concerns of granting a special privilege for that specific use or structure that convey privileges to the property owner. The third is really how it impacts the members of the public, adjacent property owners, residents. And then the fourth and final one is whether or not the, the project is consistent with the general plan and zoning code. So in this specific instance, planning staff has reviewed and made all of these findings as addressed in the staff report, predominantly the uniqueness of the, of the type of use in Atherton. We only have one library. We have limited areas for children activities. In terms of B, it's not granting of a special privileges, because this is an ancillary and accessory function to uses within the public, public facilities and school zoning district. In terms of not adversely affecting the interests of the public, the applicant has worked pretty closely with the adjacent residents, hence the good fencing request, or good neighbor fencing request. And then overall, this is consistent with the general plan and zoning code.
Okay.
Next slide. So with that, our recommended motion here is moving to approve the variances at 2 Dinkelspiel Station Lane to allow the construction of new landscaping and place structures within the required side yard setback, and based on the findings that are enumerated in the staff report.
All right, any questions of staff?
I do. First of all, I think it's a great project. I think it's a unique and creative way to activate that space behind the library. My main concern, as Eric brought up, is just making sure that the concerns of the neighbors are mitigated. And it sounds like you've done that. I just wanted to know maybe some of the details of the conversations with the neighbors, some of the feedback you got from the neighbors, and how that process went.
I have actually not heard from any neighbors since this project was publicly noticed. In preparation for the library filing this application and meetings with their representatives, their architect, and the Public Works Director here, Robert Avadia, I was very careful to insist that approval of this would, would hinge in some pla, in some ways on neighbor response. So they were encouraged from the outset of this project to get feedback from the neighbors and respond to them as any issues have come up.
All right, we'll find out more in a minute.
It's a little surprising. Is there three properties or four that, but to the, that area? I'm going from Ashfield, Ashfield all the way to Maple.
It's only two.
It's just two.
Yeah.
Looks like there's a flag lot, I don't...
On the cover sheet of the plans.
Coming off of Maple, kind of look, I'm looking at the aerial. It looks like there's maybe two structures there, and then the other one on the Ashfield side has a pool, I guess.
The assessors block map, a snapshot of it is provided on the cover sheet of the plans in the top-left corner.
Yeah. If there's three, it's, it's a pretty small little slice, but I can't... If there's three, it's, it's a pretty small little slice, but I can imagine there's three.
Whether, regardless of how many properties.
Yeah.
Surprise that he's worried about 50 screaming kids. Running around the other side of their fence. I, it's hard for me to believe that nobody objected.
Well, maybe they wanted a new fence. I looked, I looked at it, I was thinking, when I walked up to it, I was thinking the same thing. Let's, let's do the public comment section and see if we find out more information. How about that?
Because, I mean, in the report we have, there's the line about the fence that's not uniform in design as it accommodates the preferences of the individual neighbors. So there must have been some kind of.
Must have been discussion, otherwise the fence wouldn't have.
Yeah.
I, I will say too, in terms of these types of activities locating next to neighbors, in my experience, the concerns are usually noise, which then relates to hours of operation and lighting. There's no exterior lighting proposed in this. And in discussions with the library, they're not intended to use this area outside of normal operating hours. So it's, you know, it's already open to the public in some sense because they can go out there. It's, yes, there is more programming, but it's not, it's not your traditional play structures.
Right.
They're pretty minor and soft in comparison.
Alright, let's go, let's go ahead and open up.
Well, I'm just smiling because that brings up another question. And I don't know that you would know the answer, maybe we need to wait. But I mean, after hours, there's nothing really there prohibiting anybody from running back there.
Yeah, there's no fence or anything.
There are actual gates that are being added to bookend the area both sides.
Alright, I didn't see that on the map.
Yes.
Alright, anything else before we open up?
This is also for little kids. Not gonna have little kids coming back there.
Well, that's the design, that's the design. A five-foot kid on top of a three-foot mound. Okay, let's go ahead and go ahead and open up the public comment section. Yeah, go ahead, just, we had some questions about the neighbor contact and, and about the height of the mound and how that was all, and why the mound. I would say why the mound in the first place, but go ahead.
Hi there, I'm Jeffrey Miller. I'm the landscape architect for the project. Nice to meet all of you. We did present this to the city council, so they've all seen this as well. I do have a presentation if you want to pull up that so that you can kind of, it's a more colorful presentation so that you can kind of see what it was. The issue, we did meet with the neighbors on several occasions here at, at the library and in the, on the site, actually looking what it would be to be adjacent to this, this facility.
And there are two neighbors there or three?
There are two neighbors. There's a portion of the, of the third neighbor there that has a fence that exists. And they have some structures that are up, right up against that fence. So that, that part of that fence, we're gonna be adding a lattice work so that it matches all the way along. Within the, within the extent of our project, the fence doesn't go further down all the way to the street where the parking lot is on the end there. It, it's really the extent of the project that we're working on.
So the fence goes from one end of the building to the?
Other end of the building.
The other end of the building.
Yeah, where, where the other fence, so, and there's gates on either end.
Okay.
So it's basically, that's the extent of the fencing. But most of it is, is new fence, except for this small portion of it that a lattice will be attached to the existing fence there so that there's some sort of continuity when you kind of look out on the space. One thing to clarify, this is not really a playground. There's no play structures. There are logs, there are boulders, there are stumps, there's a little willow hut. There's what we call a treehouse in the middle. It's not up in the trees, it's, it's a.
The house that was made out of tree, right?
Yeah, but it's, it's in the midst of the trees, which, as you know, the site, it's full of beautiful redwood trees. The trees are being protected. There will be no other trees planted there, but there will be native plants in the, in the lower portion. Accessibility has been established by that zigzag ramp that you see. And the reason it zigzags is there are some utility vaults in the ground there, so we didn't want to cover those up, so we had to zigzag. It would have been easier had we been here earlier, but that was not the case. So anyway, we've been working with the, the planning department through this variance process and working with the building department on addressing whatever needs they have. And so now we're at this point and kind of ready to go. We're hoping to go out to bid on the project within a couple of months here. And, and everything's pretty much ready to go. I can take you through the plan if you want to go forward a little more to, that was the existing site you could see. So this is a graphic that is a little more colorful, so you can see on the left. Or I guess, I'm looking at the left, maybe you're looking at the left too. There's, there's the round willow hut. There's a pathway that's basically a five bar, it's an accessible kind of wood product pathway that will be edged by recycled tree stumps, tree, tree branches. So that's what holds it in. And then adjacent to that and kind of the green areas are the native plantings. There is a bit of a boulder mound, so it's, it's a kind of a round, rounded boulders, not sharp boulders, but things the kids can kind of climb around on.
And it's, that's on the bill, on the current building.
Building side, near the green.
Yeah.
They'll, they'll pass through, there's an existing pathway along the fence line. You can see from the left that comes in where that gate is. And that leads to a utility room in the building, so we're not, whoops.
Yeah, that's fine.
We're disconnected.
So access would be to the right of the historic chambers there, across the street here.
There'd be access on this end, access on the other end.
And on the maple side.
And, and from the library itself through the maker's room.
On the backside of the library. And then off the deck on the backside of the library as well. So you can kind of come through the library in the middle of the park, it looks like.
Yeah.
And then there would be another gate toward the maple end of, of where the deck is back there.
Two gates on either, one gate on either end, basically, yeah.
We're getting the map out, there, there we go.
So you can see the zigzag, that's a ramp, that's an accessible ramp that gets you up to the existing deck. We want to furnish the deck, extend the existing bench that's kind of linear parallel to the building. You can see the wings that were attached to kind of create an outdoor work area, kind of project area. Down below that, you can see the things that are kind of slanting that are looking kind of slanted there. So those are colorful poles, so it'll be a kind of artful walk through this space. And they're gonna be painted probably red. They'll be six feet tall, so they're not gonna be visible over the fence line. Then they're gonna come through a, a, a kind of branch tunnel. You can see the kind of, what looks like kind of a grid there beyond the, behind the deck. Now, that's, that's natural branches with plank, planks on the ground. So it, it's basically a, a kind of natural experience going through this space from one place to the next. There's no swings, there's no chin-up bars or anything like that in this space. As they come through there, there, then they come into what we're calling the treehouse, which has a connection from the deck to the treehouse, making it accessible in that way. And then over into the more open area, which is this large tree stump that was part of what was taken down here in front of the library. And also some of the branch, in the branch tunnel, we were hoping to use some of that material as well as a kind of reference to Atherton's great resource of, of cut-down trees. So then moving on, against the building, you can see there's, there's a kind of paving pattern. Right now, there, it's all decomposed granite and it's kind of destroying the building. As, as it rains, the rain hits the decomposed granite, it splashes up on the building. And you can see all the cedar siding is kind of having a little bit of a problem. So we're gonna pave that area so that we're not getting that kind of debris onto the building.
Where's the drainage gonna go for that?
Pardon me?
Where does it drain to?
It drains out, and everything will drain out into the landscape area.
Okay, good.
And it also extends some area in front of the, the staff room where there's a bench there. So this gives the staff a little opportunity to be out in the garden themselves. Down below is the stump walk. You can see all the green circles that are along the property line there are, are the redwood trees on the right. And on the left, there's some big oak trees there. There's a little bench at the end of the whole experience. And then, and then a step up into the paved area from the stump walk. So it's, it's kind of an experience place. It's not really a, as I said, it's not a playground. It's been interesting going through the review process because everybody wants to call this thing a playground, but it's not really a playground. It's a kind of natural garden experience. And there's something about this that's going on, you know, in plenty of places around the country. So this will be really a nice facility, I think, for, for Atherton. It'll be an unusual garden. And the fence line, I, I could just talk a little bit about the fence line. So on the left, you can see the kind of lighter, lighter colored fence line there. That, that's the existing neighbor's fence and everything.
That's the lower one too, right?
No, it, it has a lattice on it as well. So we're gonna match the height of that all the way along. And the darker is, is the new, newer fence.
So the pavement, the, the little stretch of pavement that you're gonna replace or, or the new pavement you're putting in, is that asphalt or?
No, no, it's gonna be pavers the same as what's in the rest of the library.
Okay, alright, thank you.
But I love this because a child that is, has to be on a walker or wheelchair or whatever can still experience a lot of this.
They can get through the whole thing, pretty much, yeah.
Great, not many play areas accommodate kids as well. Those, nice experience for them too.
Just if you go to the next few slides, it gives you a little more of the character of the willow hut. The, the treehouse is actually gonna be on the ground. There won't be a stair up like that, but it's just a kind of precedent image. These are kind of the character and maybe even almost the scale of the boulders that are gonna be there. It might not be that big. The issue is getting things in there as well. Because, you know, access is gonna be the contractor's problem, but we don't want to make it too hard for them. So there's a boulder mound, there is a tunnel. This was our original reference, you'll see in a further slide if you keep going, what that is. But you can see there's stumps and logs and things like that, so that's kind of what this is about. This is the, the painted poles, so this is kind of an artful thing that should trigger out some interest in, in, in color and excitement of that as well as these reflective columns. These will be stainless steel polished columns that again are less than the height of the fence. So, you know, if you've been to Chicago and you've seen the bean, that's kind of what this is about. You know, everybody likes to look at themselves, so it's a little bit of a fascination, I think. So we wanted to include something like that here. We'll keep going. That you can see, so these are the stump walk and the plank walk. And then that's, that's another large stump, something like what we're gonna have here in the middle from what's laying over in the yard close by here. So not gonna last forever, but it is a big, big, big stump. That thing is huge, so it'll, it'll last when we're all gone.
Alright, good.
So, I don't know, is there one more? Yeah, there, there's gonna be an artist-made bench in the garden, two of them. And then there'll be kind of some stump benches as well.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, so we're really, just to say, we're really excited about doing this. And thank you to Brittany and her team for guiding us through a, a, a really interesting process because things are dedicated as structures that don't seem like structures to me. Anything that's six inches above the ground is considered a structure. So if it's a log, I don't know, I can't really go into that log. It doesn't seem like a structure to me, but within the planning code, that's a structure. So I think we learned a lot in the process as well, just kind of navigating this because what started out to feel like, oh, this could be a really cool nature garden, turned into, wow, that's a, that's a structure. And that was a little surprising, I have to say.
Alright, any questions? Alright, the answer, alright, thank you very much. Anyone else to speak on the air? Anybody online? Okay, none, none. The only thing I would say is that probably over time, if there is, gets to be a noise issue or whatever, they'll be on top of it and they'll figure out how to, how to handle it best and either in terms of what the kids are told when they're out there or so there was always a fallback position of different kind of control on this. Alright, with that, any questions to staff, any questions or comments?
I think it looks wonderful. I love seeing that.
Alright, anything else, I'm looking, open for a motion.
I'll do it. I move that the planning commission approve the variance at Two Dinklesville Lane, Dinklesville Station Lane to allow the construction of new play structures with required side yard setback based on the findings enumerated in the staff report.
Motion seconded. All those, all those in paper say aye?
Aye.
Ask unanimously, alright, very good. Next item is item 4C, which is the front and rear setback variance for tree protection. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
For tree protection zone exceptions, 94 Palmer Lane. We'll go ahead and do the same format. We'll start with a staff report, who's got this one?
This is me again, it's me for the rest of the night.
Okay, good. Makes it easier when I have a program, okay, thank you.
And we're back at the PowerPoint presentation. So this is a variance and TPZ exception request at 94 Palmer Lane. Our recommendation for this application is to approve it, both the request for the front and rear yard setback variances as well as the tree protection zone exception that will enable the construction of a new single-family dwelling with detached garage and an attached ADU. And I'll go through our rationale here. Next slide. So some background, this is a .32 acre flag lot. It is in the R1A zoning district. Pretty much everything that's shaded yellow in the image on that side is both within the R1A zoning district as well as in the town of Atherton. Beyond the Dutch line is the unincorporated community of North Verricks.
Fresh my memory, why have we never converted all those tiny lots over there, or small lots, they're not tiny necessarily, to R1B?
They're not all that small, right?
They do vary in size. Along Holbrook Avenue or Holbrook Lane, you'll see that they're probably at their smallest. And then on Palmer, the shape changes and then over, right? So, but historically, as I mentioned in the staff report, these lots really predate the planning code, if not the, if not the entire town. When the town initially adopted a planning code, there were three residential zoning districts. Now there's only two. I'm not sure why some of the smaller R1A lots were never pursued as converting to R1B, which would be more consistent with what we see here, especially around the town center.
Yeah, I don't understand it.
The ones on, on Palmer and Holbrook, and on the right side of San Benito would fall into that category, everything left of it. I'm, I'm three blocks away from this on Xena. They're like seven eighths of an acre, eight, eight, or right around an acre.
We, I will also say that unless the town pursues a rezoning effort, it is very difficult for one homeowner to initiate that effort because you inherently need more than one property to justify the rezoning effort.
You can't do it a lot of the time.
You need to do it collectively as a community, an organized community group unless the town takes initiative.
Well, I meant like every time one of these comes up, would there be a mechanism where we could convert that particular property to R1B?
No. And so we, we see more variance interest in these areas. And so some of the feedback that I'm looking for tonight specifically on this project, is there a tolerance for variances on these properties regardless of whether or not there was an SB9 lot split, which I'll come to. That's my next. regardless of whether or not there was an SB nine lot split, which I'll come to. That's my next point, is 94 Palmer was established in 2023 through an SB nine or what's actually now referred to as an urban lot split. Previously, the combined acreage of both 98 and 94 Palmer was just over half an acre at point five five acres. And I have a typo here with established in 2022. It was nineteen twenty two. So, sorry. And then the neighboring properties, just to give you some context, and these include 95 Palmer to San Benito Avenue, eight Palmer, to give some of the larger lots some representation. They range from point one two to point seven seven acres. Next slide.
If you look, before you lose that slide, if you look farther in the in the darker area, that's unincorporated mental park. And those are, those are all smaller lots. I mean, if you go, if that went up to Encina, the other side of Encina has the same kind of look. So Encina is the last street in Atherton. And it's down the middle, the right side is is Atherton and that left side is unincorporated mental park. And it looks like this, all wrapped around it. So it'll be interesting to see over time. This is this is prime time area for S for SB nine splits, as my right, that's happening on Placeta's lot 97 over there.
Yeah.
Is is up for an SB split also. So it'll you'll you'll probably start seeing that a lot in that area. One, because it's consistent to what it looks like across the street as well as the the price point in that area. Yeah, okay, keep going.
So the actual proposal before you that's triggering the variance is a new 2,961 square foot residence. There's a detached garage, an 800 square foot attached ADU. And then, of course, it has its driveway that follows the flagpole layout of the property and stretches to the detached garage. With the SB nine lot split, when that occurs, the town has to approve future development on the new lot that accommodates a minimum of two 800 square foot units with only four foot setbacks. So the applicant does have that alternative, but they wanted to pursue more of a traditional style, single family home with ADU, which is their other alternative. SB, the town's SB nine ordinance says that you can do that at the so long as you're consistent with the R1A development. And that is why you see the 60 foot front inside yard or front and rear yard requirements. It's proposing or posing a challenge. Next slide.
Hold on before you go. Go ahead, go ahead.
So the SB nine lot split allows them two 800 square foot structures?
Residences.
Residences. Wouldn't have to approve two 900s?
No.
That 800 foot, and the is there a minimum lot size for an SB nine lot split? Maybe you can calculate it by setbacks?
There is. It's very small. We wouldn't necessarily see that in Atherton because what's driving the lot splits more in Atherton is the proportionality. You have to have a 40 60 split at most, right? So anything that gives you 40 60 is allowed. I think the actual smallest lot allowed is around 1,000 square feet. So it's not 2,400 square feet. I wanted to say 1,200 ish, but I'll go with you. Which is begs why it's kind of an irrelevant issue in Atherton because you're not going to get something that small with the lots that we have.
And I don't see an entrance to that AD.
Yeah, I don't either. That's why.
You have to have a private entrance?
You do. And so it's actually accessed off of the patio. So there's
On the left side?
On the left side.
So there's a
It has internal and external access, which is allowed.
Like a hotel where if there's a separate family there, they just lock that door?
They would presumably have that option.
Question I had on that was aligned with this is my my understanding was that when it was attached, it was a JDU and when it was detached, it was an ADU.
When it's a, it can, you can have an attached JADU or ADU.
Okay, so what's the distinction then?
JADUs are limited in size to 500 square feet.
Okay, got it.
There's also ownership restrictions on them and they're allowed to share bathrooms.
Got it. Got it. All right, thank you. I didn't know.
Sure.
Cool.
Okay, let's move on to the next slide. We can come back to that or revisit that slide with the applicant if you have more questions.
The driveway, you have that slide up real quick? Or are you going to go back to it later on?
I'll go back to the driveway relative to the trees. The first thing that I want to address is the setback variance request. Here, as I mentioned before, with R1A, there is a required setback of 60 feet. Side setback for front and rear. And then for side, it's 26 feet. There's the 30 foot height requirement. And then the FAR for the site works out to be near 3,000 square feet. And the provided column, you'll see that for the most part, they're compliant. They're
Those should be open. You sure they weren't open?
I think somebody's in there.
I think they're
There's two.
Yeah, I think.
That's why they weren't open. Somebody in there. Okay.
Yeah, they're booking you.
There is a typo in the staff report that incorrectly lists the provided rear yard is 17 feet four inches. It should be 37 feet, 4.75 inches is consistent with the front yard. What you see in the graphic on the left is that if you apply strictly the R1A zoning standards, you get a buildable area of approximately 185 square feet. What the applicant has done here
Tight. That's a tiny house.
What the applicant has done here is they've taken a provision of the code in fact in the R1A standards that allows a reduction in the front and rear yards depending on the date that the property was established and the length of the property. So it's not a perfect fit, right? You have to exclude the flag, the flagpole portion of the flag lot to apply that. And, you know, ignore that it was just created in 2023. But it gives you something to use from our existing local standards as a reference point for how they're then designing the home and coming up with these setback standards.
Got it. Makes sense. So we're adapting an existing standard kind of for this setup.
And if this were to have any sort of precedence, it's drawing from something that's already in the code.
Okay.
Next slide.
Would there be any plan in the future to outline that for the applicant of an SB nine? So that they could say this is more likely to be your footprint or something like that?
Would you outline what?
Well, so you're asking for an SB nine split and you're saying, oh, by the way, based on our, based on our our current regulations, you would have 167 square foot home available to you. So we know that that would not be something we would be doing. So at the time they split the lot, one of the things we talked about was just when you split a lot, what are, what how far into the planning process can you go? Like, to me, when you split the lot, you have a flag, you have a flag lot and you have a driveway that has to be in that one spot, theoretically, you'd evaluate the trees then rather than split the lot and then say, oh, by the way, we got to evaluate the trees.
Right.
So that goes back to the thing we're going to have to deal with at some time in SB nines is how far do you know what you're going to do with a lot to approve a split?
It seems like a big risk flooding the lot and go, oh, we're not going to allow a
Well, I mean, for example, this, not that we would have approved it, but theoretically, we could have split it on the other side. So the driveway wasn't next to the trees because the next, the next side doesn't, I don't think it has the same kind of tree setup. So those kind of choices would be things that would be part of the discussion if we were doing SB nine planning.
So I'll let the applicant address some of the choices that they made when they did the lot split. I think there may have been confusion relative to that provision in R1A about using the the historic age of the property to reduce the standards, which may have inspired that application. I wasn't part of the SB nine review during that time. What I can say about SB nine projects moving forward is that we do ask them to show the buildable area of the lot because we also want to be mindful of if somebody is doing a lot split and they sell the new lot to somebody else. Does the owner know what their limitations are? And it's, it becomes somewhat cluttered on the map because there's effectively two development standards that they need to be mindful of. Multiple, if you start thinking about ADUs and accessory structure standards as well. There's the four foot setback requirement. If you're doing two SB nine units that are 800 square feet, which is confusing because that's exactly what ADUs are limited in the state's standard program. And then there's the R1A standards, which convey a completely different footprint. And then there's the ADUs for the R1As. So it does get it can get convoluted. We're very limited in terms of what we can require that they show on the map. In terms of the tree exceptions, we do alert applicants, at least now, that they're that they're likely going to need a tree protection zone exception for a future driveway or removal request, depending on which option they pursue. We try and put that in writing so that there is this paper trail for future owners or potential applicants. But in reality, well, let me kind of introduce this slide. So this is the TPZ exception request that I have up in front of you. It relates to six coast live oaks ranging in diameter at breast height from 16 inches to 32. All are in good health. The majority are either shared or on the neighboring lot. And the encroachment into the TPZ area or the reduction in the zone is ranges from 3.7X to seven, 7X. Part of the challenge in looking at this is that if the applicant were to come back and pursue two SB nine units, there would be no requirement for a TPZ exception. There would be no requirement for a heritage tree removal. It would be very similar to the way that we have to review ADUs.
Yeah, but he'd get two, two 800 square foot.
Well, that's, I mean, but it could be that they locate their ADU here as well. We see that too, where people are using their ADU ADU placement strategically to circumvent tree requirements.
Right. I'm waiting for somebody to move their ADU around the
Well, the last time we did a heritage tree ordinance update, we actually created penalties for that. So that's not within the cards. In this situation, I think, even though there is this issue with the TPZs, they have provided the most gracious side setback relief from the Atherton adjacent neighbor.
Yes, and also they've done a good job on mitigating on the driveway format, what kind of materials for the format.
Correct. And they are adhering to the R1A side setback here.
The intent is very clear in this plan, that they're trying to do the right thing.
All right, so let me move on to the next slide. So this is summarizing the town, town arborist analysis of the TPZ. The first one is wanting to make sure there's documented outreach to the neighboring owner of the subject trees. That the project arborist is required to be on hand during any sort of excavation for the demo of the existing driveway and excavation of the new driveway. Three, that excavations are required to be performed carefully and by hand at eight times away or less. That the project arborist or their designated person shall cut all roots larger than one inch with a sharp saw on the side of the excavation closest to the trees. No roots over two inches are allowed to be cut. All work is required to be documented in the quarterly arborist reports. And then they have required installation of the easy pave grid as shown in the plans that were provided in a detail. Next slide. It builds the suspense.
Nice presentation.
I'm pretty sure it's the recommendation. Let me jump ahead.
Yeah.
So our recommended motion is to approve the heritage tree removal permit. Sorry, no, wrong project. To approve the the variance request for front and rear yard setbacks and then the TPZ exemption.
Right.
That concludes my presentation.
Nice job. All right. Any questions, the staff?
Just to make sure technically, don't have to hold reference to historic.
Correct. You do not have to
Try to apply it and we don't have to approve it.
Correct.
So the the other thing to think about is on SB nine, they, they, an applicant could do a duplex and an ADU. That's the other
No, actually, they're limited only to two units with an SB nine lot split. So you can do two SB nine units, which are 800 square feet and four foot setbacks. Or you can do an ADU and a main residence.
Okay. All right, I remember seeing maps.
You could do a duplex.
Yeah, I remember seeing a map that showed duplex and an ADU as an as an option because we had a long discussion about that. So I'll just, let's just double check that because I think that that was very clearly
Remember, yeah, the last one, you could end up with six living units.
Right, that's exactly right. You could end up with a duplex, with a JDU and an ADU or two ADUs, depending on the size.
For SB nine, at this time, you are not allowed to do ADUs on top of the SB nine units. You can only do an ADU and you can only have one ADU as part of your main residence. I have seen larger lots that have gone through the SB nine that have tried to do a detached ADU in addition to their internal ADU. And they had enough floor area still with the lot that even if they don't call it an ADU, they can still have it as a pool house.
Right.
Right? So that might be where there's some confusion.
Okay, all right, that's good. I just remembered the presentation that was given. All right, so we'll go back. Well, that's, that's good. That's good because otherwise we went through a really long discussion about that map that showed that the one to six method. Yeah. All right, good. All right, any other questions, staff? Okay, I'll go ahead and open up the public comment section. You got an applicant or representative? Thank you for waiting.
Hi, my name's Kelly Johnson and I'm the architect of record for this project. I'd also like to introduce you to Andre Magoso. He's the owner of 94 Palmer Lane.
You're in the in the current house that's on the property? The current house that's on the, okay, all right.
And I'm the architect.
Okay, all right.
So as Brittany's already mentioned, this lot was split in 2023, May of 2023. I started working on this project and I had my first meeting to discuss this process of needing the setback variance in the end of April in 2024. So I've been working with the planning department for over a year. I've made multiple submissions. I've worked with multiple planners. And at each step, we've required the additional information before we were granted the opportunity to be here at the planning commission. We've listened carefully to the planning department. We have worked diligently and we have spent many, many hours and resources designing a solution for this property. We think our solution is respectful to the neighbors and scale and the distance from the property lines. It's a good fit for the community and it is in line with the development standards along Palmer Lane. We feel that it is a common sense solution. We've worked with the town arborist and the fire department to try and provide the maximum protection for the heritage trees and still allow the property to be accessed and to protect in a disaster. We hope that you have the opportunity to spend a few minutes on the site this week and that We hope that you had the opportunity to spend a few minutes on the site this week and that you were able to carefully look through our submitted materials. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions, um, you might have tonight. Thank you.
Any questions? Is, is the underground pool gonna be, is, keep in the property?
That's gonna come out.
Just checking.
Andre, did you have anything?
Alright, no questions? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It is a very good plan for the site, for the site and the site usage. Uh, any, any other comments, uh, from anyone else, anyone online? Then I'll go ahead and close public comments and bring it back to the session for discussion and action appropriate.
I've read, um, Sally's, uh, report. I was just wondering if she had any extra comments or wanted to, uh, expound on her report or what her experience has been in doing the property.
Uh, the applicant has, uh, taken all of my suggestions with the alternative paving method with, uh, using pinch points for the driveway, uh, moving the driveway back as far as possible. They've been open to all the arborist suggestions. Um, so I feel like allow access to their site. Um, I can allow those TV, even though some of them are low and they're neighbor's trees. But because they have, they are doing the best they can to protect those trees, I feel comfortable recommending.
You're definitely a gold star owner. That's good. Alright, I'm ready for a motion?
I think it makes sense for the.
I can make a move. I can move the planning mission approved the request of the front and back setback variances of the AR twenty-four dash zero zero three and pre, pre-protection vote, exceptions PZ twenty-five dash zero 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 two, uh, to construct a new single family dwelling and, uh, detached garage and attached eighty, ninety-four Palmer Lane. Categorily exempt the project from the provisions of California Environmental Quality Act. It's equal under the AMC section fifty and a hundred and the SEQA section five three oh four, minor alterations to.
I will second.
Putin seconded? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Thank you for waiting.
Thank you for your work on the project.
Thank you for, thank you for taking advice and definitely, definitely, uh, that made, that made Sally's a whole month.
Good luck taking that pool out.
Yeah. Yeah, the mosquitoes will never love you. Alright, uh, the next item is, uh, item four D, the heritage tree removal requests at, uh, eighteen Faxon Forest Road, which I learned there's a Faxon Road and a Faxon Forest Road that I discovered, uh, on the tour. So with that, then we'll go ahead and, uh, have the staff report and you said you're got all night, so.
Oh, yes, it's me again. Brittany Bendix, town planner, Michael Gallagher on the slides.
Hey, keep wanting to get credit where credit is due.
And we're, we're joined, uh, here in person with the property owners. Go ahead, next slide. So our recommendation tonight is generally split. Uh, we are recommending that you approve the heritage tree removal requests, uh, for two coast live oaks and then deny the heritage tree removal requests for the three trident maples. Um, and I just wanna caveat here that Sally's recommendation is to only approve one coast live oak. Planning staff is recommending approving two coast live oaks. So I'll get there. Next slide. Some background, this is a one point three three acre lot, also within the R one A zoning district. It's at the terminus of Faxon Forest Road, which is a cul-de-sac. Um, and then it's co- under common ownership with the two adjacent vacant lots that you see kind of right under the subject property label and to the left of it. It's developed with an existing single family home that was constructed circa nineteen ninety-five. Uh, there are undergoing some recent landscaping renovations, which is kind of perpetuating the desire to remove these trees.
Oh, I, when I was doing the tour, I didn't have it in my head that those others, that back area was not their property. I was thinking it was all the way back. I think.
It's their property, but two different.
Okay.
Yes. Yes.
Cause I, we saw one point three three acre and I went, that seemed a lot bigger than that. Okay, now I got it. That's why, that's.
Next slide. So the project description and request, uh, is really to remove five trees to supplement their current landscaping renovations. The trees here that are, uh, highlighted in blue and green, those respect, uh, those reflect the, the trees for removal. The two coast live oaks are shown in green. They're good and fair health. Uh, but the removal is attributed to structural and flatwork, uh, damage concerns. And then the blue trees that are shown here are trident maples, also in good and fair health. The removal request there is attributed to an aesthetic shift in the landscaping goals. Uh, and then there are fifteen new trees proposed for replacement and those are highlighted in yellow and pink or red. Next slide. The town arborist analysis, um, is that the two coast live oak trees, trees number one and two are located directly within the proposed pathway, uh, footprint. They're in fair and good health with, uh, strong structural condition. They exhibit a healthy flush of spring growth, vibrant green foliage that's indicative of good vitality. And structurally, they display the characteristic form of, that's typical of these species. Uh, root crown inspections revealed no visible disorders that would warrant their removal. Then with the three trident maples, the town arborist also found that they're in fair to good health with structural condition. At the time of the inspection, the trees were leafless. So structurally, they exhibited the typical upright growth pattern characteristic of, uh, trident maples with erect branches emerging from a central leader. The root crown inspections of these trees revealed no visible disorders that would necessi- necessitate, uh, necessitate their removal.
They're fully leafed now, by the way. They're fully in major bloom.
So Sally gave them support for removal of tree number one based on the proximity to the house and damage to hardscape and foundation per the engineering report. Uh, there was no proof of damage to the foundation caused by trees number two through five. Trees number, tree number two is the other oak tree. And so having that verification of damage was critical to Sally being able to justify that's removal. Uh, for me, I support it because it's, uh, the proximity of the tree to the flatwork and the foundation uh, implies that it would be potentially damaging to the home. Uh, so it was extending some, some leniency there. Uh, however, both of us are against the removal of the three trident maples. And then Sally.
This was a remodel of a home, is that, which you said and told me?
Landscaping.
Landscape?
It's all landscaping.
The reason for the request?
Yes.
Is redoing the landscaping or damage to the current landscaping?
Uh, and the foundation.
Okay, but, uh, so there's, there's brand new sidewalk all the way around the, the house now. And it, and it's at two dead ends, right in front of the front tree, which I, is tree number two, I guess. How did that get built without, uh, a, a review of where that was gonna go? I mean, it looks like it was done with the idea that that tree was gonna go away. It doesn't look like it was done with the idea that.
So there's, there's no approval for removal of the tree to uh, accommodate that landscaping improvement or the connectivity between that pathway.
I mean, it's a big, thick, concrete path. I mean, it's like street depth. It's a very big, thick.
Yeah, but the landscaping plan had to be approved by the city, right?
The landscaping plan did not include removal of the tree.
Oh, I understand that.
But the flatwork.
Was there a TPZ, TPZ zone exception required for the sidewalks? Cause they, they did, it's been done very professionally by an arborist. Clean, covered.
Yeah, so currently they've applied for fence gates, grading and drainage, um, and landscape permits. Um, and so, uh, when they started, before they pulled the permits, they had me out to walk the site and, and review the trees. I denied the trees for removal, but they, but they wanted to move forward with their project. However, most of those were those new, so they demoed all of the hardscape. The, the applicant can speak on this too, but they demoed all of the existing hardscape. A part of the grading and drainage is putting a new hardscape. And, and most of those places where they put the new hardscape is where, where the old hardscape was. Right? So they are just fixing maybe broken hardscape and they're updating the design of the landscape. Which is, which is why they wanna remove the trees. Um, when I denied the oak trees, I said, I can re-review this if you get me proof of damage to the foundation. Uh, so there was proof of damage to the foundation for number one, so I have no problem approving that. As you can see, if you went to the site, that tree is over the roof of the house.
Yeah.
That is fine, as long as there's proof of damage to the foundation. Second oak tree, there was no proof of damage to the foundation. There was damage to the hardscape, but what I understand now is that hardscape has demoed and hardscape has. But the applicant will need to speak on where, what part of the process they're in currently.
Okay. Alright, that makes sense. Any questions, staff? Are you, did you have more slides?
I wanted to just add that the replacement proposal has been accepted by Sally and is incorporated to any conditions of approval.
Okay. Alright, so I'll go ahead and open up the public comment section. African or representative?
Thank you for your time. My name is Adnason. Um, I'm a twenty-seven year resident of Atherton. We own, I think, four parcels, um, in total. Three, as was shown on, and one on Faxon.
Oh, yeah, that's a open lot, right?
No, it's actually before you get to Faxon Forest, there's a cul-de-sac. Another property, uh, there that we just renovated and all of that. We moved, uh, to, and we bought the house in ninety-eight and moved in in ninety-nine. We did a whole landscaping at the time. And we made a mistake of putting two oak trees right next to the house, not understanding what's gonna happen. It was part of the, we didn't know enough. And those are the two trees that are encroaching on the foundation and broke up all the house, hardscape. And what you saw there is a replacement of what was there before.
Okay, that was the same route as the previously was? And so the old, the old was all broken up right across the top of the roots? Okay, got it.
And it's also going over the house, which is also an issue. So it's really two, two different things. There's, there are the oaks that are structural issues and we have, uh, opinions from structural engineers and stuff for both of them and they are recommending removal of them. And then there's the tridents, which is, has to do with more redoing the landscape after twenty, whatever it is, five, six years. We're completely, as you saw, we completed them, took everything away and we're kind of redoing it. We did the plan back in nineteen nineteen, I keep saying ninety-nine. Uh, two thousand nineteen, um, uh, there's a landscape architect, uh, that lives in London, he's Italian, well-known one. Covid happened and we didn't actually go through with it and we continued, we did the other house in the meantime. That just finished recently, so we're now starting on this project. That's why the delay. And it's just, uh, these particular tridents doesn't necessarily match and we've decided, we're definitely not building on the other two lots. We're keeping it as a buffer, if you will. And then Faxon Forest was named actually after this lump. It was very overgrown. I'm not sure if you ever saw it before, um, we bought it back in twenty thirteen. It was, uh, also a place where teenagers would go to small pot. So, um, we bought it and, um, kind of cleaned it all out. There are twenty-six heritage trees in the two lots. There are twelve additional heritage trees other than these five, um, on the eighteen lot. So we're very committed to having this very lush, um, set of trees. We love them. That's why we live in, uh, Atherton and we definitely don't wanna do anything to take that away. This is not one of those that we're trying to build, you know, take out trees so we can build some monstrosity. We're not doing anything to the house. It's a Frank Lloyd Wright.
Ah, you gotta say, it's an amazing house.
Yes.
It's an amazing house.
Um, and we're committed to the house and the beauty of it and we're not extending it. We're not adding ADUs. We're not adding, playing any games to trying to do that. It's just that, as you've seen, the lot is kinda weird shape in the front and we're trying to square it off and these trees, at least two of them are kinda in the way, the tridents. And because we have the lots in the back and we haven't done it up to this point, but we wanted to open it up so we have a much wider vista because from the back of our house, it's actually from the setback, it's not that far.
Right.
So to give it some distance and this one is kinda sitting right from the master bedroom looking down. So we're very much committed to replacing all the trees that we're planting that wasn't on the image for very large, um, trees at, uh, redwood trees that's on the the left side of the property next to the other property line. That wasn't on that map. They're sixteen feet tall from the beginning. So we're definitely replacing a lot more than what we're proposing to take away. And we're hoping that you can see that there is no, we're not trying to play games or we love the trees and all of that, but unfortunately it doesn't fit with all the expenses that we've had trying to do the complete redesign and we took it to the city and it got approved and, uh, all of that. So that's kinda where we are. Be happy to answer any question. By the way, thanks for your service.
Well, I, 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 that helps me understand because I thought when I went there, I was, this was like a brand new house that they just deliberately put it too close to the, to the trees and then did the sidewalk and said, hey, for, you know, let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and, and see if they'll dare us, dare us to, to not take out that tree because I said, see the two dead ends right there going like, what, what? But now I understand that it was where the sidewalk was, so that's. Yeah, makes it much, much, that part of it makes it.
It's a beautiful building.
Yeah, anymore, any questions? Frank Lloyd Wright really did that house?
Uh, his disciples, Burkini's, that were down Berkeley. They designed the house and it's kind of a throwback to the falling water.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, it doesn't look totally Frank Lloyd Wright-esque, but I can see the flavor of it.
Inside and everything is, yeah.
Inside is running.
It's inspired.
Yeah, inspired, yeah.
It's probably the right.
Alright, any questions? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, any, uh, any other, anyone else online to speak on this item? Anyone else here to speak on the item? Alright, then, uh, go ahead, we'll go ahead and, uh, close the public comment section and bring it back, uh, for discussion and action. So so that made me feel much better about the, the requests on the two oak trees, uh, based on what I, what I had in my head when I went there. I went, why would they put that so close?
Uh, it seems to me that, uh, number one, one that's closer to the house, ironically, just looking not only at the picture but seeing it, uh, with, you know, some creative pruning and thinning out, that could really be a showpiece of a tree. That, that's just my personal opinion.
Except for the, except for the foundation damage. And poor kid running around the corner on, on bicycle, come around that corner, hit there, where'd that tree come? Alright, so those, I, the, the two oak trees for me are, are, make more sense now than they did when I did the tour on the site. The, the other, the other trees, the, uh, trident maple trees. The aesthetic thing is a tough thing to get to from a standpoint of, for me anyway, from a standpoint of so the, the tree protection thing is about the tree rather than, you know, nothing we do is around aesthetics. I mean, that's, I've been on other planning commissions where you actually got involved with the design and the color, like in Atherton, if you wanna go chartreuse, it's chartreuse, it's your choice. Uh, so we don't get, we don't get much leeway in terms of aesthetic on anything we do. It's, those trees are healthy. I have a problem with the three, the trident maples. I have a problem with the three, the trident maples. I understand the problem with maintaining messy. All right.
Well, the trees will be replaced. I know that's not perfect, right? But I mean, there are going to be more trees put in. I don't know, Sally, if that really helps or not, right? That's not.
I mean, the decision is up to you. I just wouldn't want to, I mean, I don't know if, that precedence, but I don't want to set precedence.
I mean, there's nothing there about those trees that's unhealthy or anything at all. What would we hang it on?
So I guess it comes down to the philosophy of wants to achieve this, do this with their property. At what point they know you can't?
Or at what point, because of planning commission, I with our ordinances?
That, that's a question of ordinances.
Well, here's the thing, is that I, Paul was part of the, the joint group that was doing that with the, with the tree committee years ago and I was on the planning commission at that point. And there was a lot of discussion about this tree on the list or that tree on the list and whether or not that, and what height to be measured and so the, I always, I always joke that it's if you have a choice, a choice between being a person or a tree in Atherton, it's safer to be a tree. You know, so this is one of those things where there's nothing wrong with this request from a standpoint of how, how the outcome would look to neighbors or the property owner. The only thing wrong with the request is the ordinance.
Any compromise?
I will say that, sorry, town planner Brittany Bennix. What you have in front of you is staff's attempt to draw a compromise, right? Approving the oak trees, drawing a line with the trident maple. I can understand how there might be some desire to provide flexibility for the trident maples. I think some of the things that I've heard the planning commission discuss in the past on, at meetings where you don't necessarily take staff's recommendation relate to the quantity of other heritage trees onsite or the proliferation of other heritage trees onsite. That's something that I raised with Sally as we were writing the staff report in terms of getting applicants to do a full inventory and not just focus on the, the trees to remove, that they want to remove. With this property, it's pretty easy and clear-cut to see from aerial photographs that there are a lot of other heritage trees available without having a site plan to look at. Another thing that I'm taking into consideration is the stewardship of these owners, the owners have had in taking care of these trees and they themselves wanting to replace them. I don't know necessarily in my mind how to frame that in a policy direction, but I think that that's worth considering as well if you're leaning in that direction in terms of guiding staff on how to navigate making these recommendations in a way that's actually aligning with the commission's vote because that's frankly where I'm trying to get us to a point where when we make a recommendation, it's consistent with my, my anticipation of where this body stands.
Yeah, and also, unfortunately, or, you know, just overall, we've had a lot of issues with people doing things without asking. And so that we've tightened up on, on ordinance accuracy. I, I would go ahead and break this into two parts for a quick vote on the oak trees and talk about the.
That's a great idea.
Okay, so I move that the planning commission approved the heritage removal of both two, of two coastal live oaks at 18 Faxton Forest Road, trees number one and two.
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, that's, that's done. Now, now we, let's talk about how to handle the trident maples. So you can finish your sidewalk.
Well, the, the two that are in, in, near the entryway, I mean, it's not mentioned in any of the reports, but that must be a nightmare in the fall.
Oh yeah, they've got to be. Your gardener, come on up, come up. Go ahead and open up the public comment section.
The two that are in, in the front of your house right near the entryway, it must be a nightmare in the fall. Did you plant those trees also?
No. They were originally there when we bought, actually, they were probably part of the Heller state. That whole Faxton Forest used to be an 11-acre Heller state.
It's the Clary Heller state.
Yeah, and I think the tridents are left over from them.
Well, gotta be messy trees.
They were very messy. I cannot, and the squirrels love the.
Yeah.
It is a nightmare, to be honest with you.
But I have, I have much more of a problem with that one in the back corner of the property because, why?
It's also going into, there are oaks that are, I think they're on the 12 or 16 Faxton, they're in the lots. But this thing is also going into it that we had to actually trim it so that they don't go into each other. So it is encroaching on the oaks on the other side.
It's interfering with some other trees you'd like to look at?
Well, obviously, we love, sorry, we love the oaks. This one is sitting right exactly where the view from the master bedroom, that would look over the lots. This blocks that. And it's also, there are oaks on this side of it that is in front of kind of the pool. That, it's also encroaching on those that we constantly have to prune to make sure it doesn't.
Where are you, where are you proposing to plant these redwoods and?
The redwoods go on, so.
Can you pull up the map?
Do you mind putting the map up? Fortunately, it's not on the map, but it's on the left side of the property next to the only neighbor.
Yeah. Okay, so.
To do better screen, yes.
Left, this left side.
Then facing the house?
Yeah, you're facing the front.
Facing the house, yeah.
You're facing the front door.
As you're facing the front door, all the way on the left.
All right. All right, close the public comment, what? Yeah, go ahead and bring it up just so we have reference to it.
Where are the architectural multi-trunk maple trees going? The cherry trees are marked or the maple tree?
Yeah, you have a more complete map than this? Oh, there you go. There's a, there's a map.
It's enough to give me a headache.
Yeah.
And as I mentioned, there, we actually counted it today. There are 26 heritage tree that would, with large trunks on the lots and 12 on this one.
Wow. Wow.
Those are graphic notes that are in the plan that got embedded when we saved it as a PDF.
No, but the circles represent the heritage trees.
All the little circles do not, the big circles, yeah, look for the big circles, ignore the little ones.
Right.
And the two front trees we're talking about are the two, the ears to the Mickey Mouse, right?
Yes.
The hidden Mickey.
What?
The hidden Mickey.
And there is a water feature that's going right across from the front door.
Right.
With these maples, you can imagine the, when they shed the leaves, it's going to be a nightmare for that.
Well, so within the, so let's talk about it from a planning perspective. From a planning perspective, combination of the number of trees is, is a lot for the property. And there's more being proposed. So one of the other things we have going all the time is, is, you know, we're so protective of the trees, we have too many trees on a lot of properties. So question I have is, first of all, you know, the trees you're putting close to the right side of the home, make sure that they're not trees that are turned into oak trees. All right, well, I'm looking for a motion.
Well, I, you know, I stand on this. I'd like, I'd like to see him at least be able to do in front. Because I think they're going to be, they're a nightmare right now for his entryway, and if he's putting a water feature there, it's, it's going to be. And, and I think there's enough of all the things Brittany listed and you listed, we've all listed. These people are good stewards and, and they're, they're helping us counter the the damage being done to the forestry and Amazon. So we're getting some good help from these people.
All right, I can, in the context of how it's, how the plan overall works and the unique, of the, of the, of the situation on the property, I can, I can go with a removal. I could, actually on that, I basically, I could agree, but.
I can support all three.
I need clarification on the replacements because it's not, there's, on this new plan, they're saying new ficus trees, but that's not part of the replacements.
The ficus aren't?
But there are, is, are there not 15 more trees that are going in? I know those are not replacements, but you are putting in more trees, correct?
So the replacement list that we have and have included in the conditions of approval are eight ornamental cherry or Japanese maple trees, two architectural multi-trunk maple trees, four redwood trees, one pine tree, and 10 ficus trees.
So we're getting maples, but a better type of maple.
Yeah. The Japanese maples are beautiful.
I've got a bunch of Japanese maples. They're beautiful. I have a 45-year-old.
Ficus trees never turn into heritage trees, right? I mean, they kind of don't.
Actually, the ficus trees aren't listed in the conditions of approval. That was part, I was reading the wrong thing.
I don't, I don't see them on the, on the.
Was there a mention of redwood, was there a mention of redwood trees as well? Four, yes. Four redwood trees. But is that not, that's not a condition of approval?
It is. So I'm looking at attachment four, which is your draft certificate of approval. Right now, it's phrased to just approve the oaks. The, the replacements listed under item three. Address that and I can bring that element up to, to share on the screen.
So typically, when you remove oak trees per our code, we replace with oak trees, but the applicant asked, because they have so many oak trees on all of their properties, if they could replace with large redwood trees and I agreed to that.
Okay, got it.
So the redwoods are the replacements.
Did I don't say anything about these ficus trees you're talking about?
Yeah, I was quoting from the project arborist or the applicant's letter, which also lists the ficus trees. So I read off the wrong list. Apologies. It's not in, it's not a condition of approval, it is part of their design.
Yeah, which means they can do it, but we don't have to approve it.
Correct. It's not part of the calculation.
Right, we don't have to.
It's a flag.
Sally doesn't have her name on the precedent, so I'll do it. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the maples, the three maples in consideration subject to the conditions, the draft heritage tree removal certificate consisting of replacements listed. Maples three, four, and five?
Yes.
I'll second.
All right, moving second, any further discussion?
I'd just like to comment, I never like to go against Sally or staff here. But I think the property owners here have been so responsible. They didn't do anything before they came to us. They clearly are invested in the property and the look of it, not only for themselves and for their neighbors, that I, I think I'm, I'm willing here to go with them, hopefully Sally, with being good stewards of trees too in that they're going to replace some of these trees. And I think the overall look of the lot, it'll still retain all the lovely wooded features. So I just, I want to make that clear because I know in past times, we've sort of said, well, you know, we weren't given any choice and here we are and what's the point of having the ordinance? And I, I just want to make it clear on this, those are the reasons why I'm willing to.
Appreciate it, understand it.
All right, I'm going to officially close the public hearing, so. So it was on record that I closed. All right, we have a motion, a second?
I'll second.
Now, let's go for a voice vote on this one.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Vice Chair Palito?
Aye.
Commissioner Levinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Teneli?
Aye.
Commissioner Lugers?
Aye.
Chair Lane?
Aye. Because of special circumstances. And, and, and the care that you brought to the whole process. Definitely, definitely you're helping the neighborhood.
All right, thank you very much for that. All right, you're, you're free to plant trees. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
What a, what a lovely place, too. What a totally lovely place. All right, the next item on the agenda is staff report.
The only item that I have is just bringing to your attention, I sent you an email, I think, earlier today trying to schedule a study session, potential study session with the city council to resume our conversations on inclusionary housing policies in town. Now that we have the housing element certified, yay. So if you could get back to me on your availability, I know two members can attend, so I'm just looking for a third-to-get quorum at this point.
I have one comment actually directed at you. We go into these joint meetings, like I said, I've done them for years with the finance committee, but it, city council tends to be privy to a whole lot of information that we are not because of their weekly one-on-ones with George and all the sharing of information, which we don't do with you. I'm not suggesting we want to see you every single week and I know you don't want to see us. But I, I really don't like to go into the, that kind of meeting when they're armed with a bunch of information we know nothing about, which is exactly what, what led us to, to suggest that they remove certain properties from the multifamily RM10 zones because we, we didn't know that there were actually some people interested in doing it, which was a key motivator for you, I know. So I, I'm not, take that for what it's worth, but maybe there's a way we could be a little more informed of what the city manager and the city council are thinking about as well as what the planning department is thinking about, rather than just go in there and.
Yeah, I don't know, we look like fools, but we don't, we look informed. So, yeah, that's what I felt on a couple of meetings where it was clear that there had been discussion about stuff that we had no concept of and then all of a sudden we're sort of getting up speed. Oh, were you here for 98? Oh, no, it did not happen. I did, I, I should have, when I saw you walk in, I should have told you. The applicant asked it to be continued to next month and I, and I did that early on. When I saw you come in, I went, oh, I, maybe he's here for 98. I'm, I, I thought maybe you were talking.
I thought he was here to have another meeting.
I'm sorry, but, I'm sorry about that.
Hi, Alex.
Yeah, so, yeah, they, they asked to be put on the agenda for the June meeting. All right, sorry about that. And I highlighted it in the beginning and I did, I should have done it later on, I'm sorry. But, but you had a scintillating view of this, this meeting. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, good.
Parked wrecked too.
Oh, I see, okay.
Used to be on train.
All right, so, all right, so you got the picture, right? We just want to feel like we're up to speed on what are the inside skinny is.
So I think I heard Commissioner Tenelli note that the date that I was floating is the Monday. Normally, our meetings are on Wednesday, as are the city council meetings. And then the city manager has check-ins with the council members, the Monday and Tuesday leading up to that meeting. So in some way, I am not, in some way, my instinct is to set up one-on-ones because that's kind of the easiest way to make sure that you're up to speed on the, the most current version or chatter that's, that's going on.
You can do two-on-twos, two-on-ones.
That's true, yeah. So I, I can certainly work with Chair Lane and Vice Chair Palito to come up with a strategy that might be able to make sure that information is being more readily relayed quickly.
I have, I have some really strong opinions about this, but I don't know whether I have all the information. So it's hard to have a strong opinion.
Yeah, and he wants to have the right strong opinion because we don't want him to get kicked off the commission.
Well, I mean, it is also important to, to touch on the Brown Act here, right? Like, there can't, there shouldn't be a lot of information out there that hasn't already been publicly shared. So sometimes I think the information that council members may be relaying or commenting on in the study sessions are things that they've picked up with, picked up on from one-on-ones with members of the public that are driving interest.
I got it.
And then staff is reacting to that feedback on the fly in trying to navigate those concerns that are coming from the public via delegates or representative, representatives. So sometimes we don't know. We're just used to not necessarily always knowing and having a pivot, but.
Is George communicating with you on a regular basis, at least as much as he is with the council members?
In terms, we have, we do have regular check-ins. I don't check in with him every week on what he's discussed with council members because.
I wouldn't expect you to.
I mean, planning policy isn't necessarily the driving force of policy conversation right now. I'm taking a little bit of a backseat after housing.
But for this meeting you're trying to schedule, it is.
Yes, we will be in frequent communication.
All right, well, whatever insight you can get us that was, that is not violating any Brown Rock, Brown Rock information, it'll be helpful to us to better prepare for the meeting. All right, that's good. All right, anything else?
No.
Did we mention that the, the housing plan was accepted by the state?
She did, yes.
I think we got to mention that last time, no?
You know, I just, I just, I just was, I was just bringing it up again because it's such a big thing. It's a, it's a real big victory thing. If you've seen the, the articles recently about.
Can't imagine how many hours you put into that.
Passer Robles is, or what is it, next door?
Portola Valley.
Portola Valley. Portola Valley is having all kinds of problems. And so there, we're avoiding all that. And even Mellow Park's still struggling.
Yep, they are.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, to get through the gauntlet on this is really, it's, it's not a natural act for sure.
Caramel has to do 700, 748.
Remember 748?
Where, where? I mean, Caramel is just so packed.
They, they also now have to provide that five foot buffer everywhere because they're in a high fire severity area.
Oh, wow, 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 wow. Man, oh, man. I don't, there's just.
They need to build a high rise on.
Yeah.
And then, and I would hope right next to it for the next cycle.
Oh, man, that's incredible. All right. Hold on, commissioners report, commissioner report. No, I just want to happen to be called out on the, on the minutes. Any commissioner reports? All right, now, motion to adjourn.